Good evening. At this time, we would call the June 7th, 2016 meeting of the Yukon City Council to order, and we are blessed this evening to have two people to pray, so if you would stand for Father Rex Arnold from Saint John's and Debbie Powell Maxwell from First Christian Church, they will both bless us this evening. We are very thankful and appreciate you both coming and offering the blessing. Thank you.
In the 12th century, Saint Francis of Assisi said, "Start by doing what's necessary, then do what's possible, and suddenly, you're doing the impossible."
Let us pray. God of all the nations, you have called all people to lives of service and justice. You have called all people to lives of peace and wholeness in community. Bless all those who gather now in this place to answer your call on behalf of the city of Yukon to be a people of service, justice, peace, and wholeness. As our city moves forward with purpose, and as we leave behind anger and resentment, we are grateful for the many gifts your people bring. The gift of discernment, the gift of wisdom, the gifts of vision for our community. Grant to all the gift of patience and cooperation. Grant to those who ponder differing views, the gift of clarity of thought. Grant to all the courage for truth. We ask that all eyes be constantly open to one another and the issues of this city government that can and should be solved, or at least improved. Even as our heads are bowed, we continue to look up at what can be accomplished by applying the gifts and talents and experience we owe to you. And as we work together on behalf of all who live in the city of Yukon, may we gain strength and sustenance from one another through reason and compassion and trust. May our prayers as a people and a city be heard and blessed, for we make this plea in all faith. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Smystrela?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
At this time, we are honored to have an Eagle Scout, Hayden Frampton. He is here with his family this evening. If you would meet me down front, I am honored to meet you and present a proclamation. So this evening, we're here, and this is a proclamation. It says, "Whereas Hayden Frampton, a 2016 graduate from Yukon High School and a member of the Boy Scout Troop 807, has completed the requirements and will be recognized and honored for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. And whereas, the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest ranked achievement in scouting and is an honor earned by only a small percentage of the youth involved in the organization. And whereas Hayden earned 44 merit badges in his Eagle Scout project, including building a volleyball court at Bloodsoe Park, he served his troop in a variety of leadership roles, and he served as the editor-in-chief of the award-winning Yukon High School newspaper. And whereas Hayden serves as an example to youth throughout his high level of personal achievement, leadership, and community service, and has made the city of Yukon proud. I therefore, John Alberts, Mayor of the city of Yukon, do hereby recognize and commend Hayden Frampton for his achievement as the rank of Eagle Scout for the Boy Scouts of America, given under my seal this day, the 7th day of June 2016." So this is your day, Hayden. Congratulations very much. So share with us a little bit about scouting and what you've learned in just about a five-minute extemporaneous speech.
Well, I started scouting. I was born in McAllister, Oklahoma. I started scouting there. I did that for about a year or two, and then I moved up here and I joined my Troop 807. From there, I continued to learn and grow as a scout. Best thing I've ever been in. This is, it's great. I've served as the troop's leader. It's called the senior patrol leader. You manage the troop. You plan everything. You're in charge of everything. It's a very tough role to have, but it's a very rewarding one. I've done it since 2000. I've been in it since 2009. Before that, I was in Cub Scouts, so I've been in it my whole life. I love it. Now, I'm going on to be, I'm saying in the troop as an adult leader. Love it. I built the volleyball court here in Bloodsoe Park. That was fun. I started last, it was last June or July, working with Claudia Kerschka. My original plan was to redo the grills out at Freedom Park, I think. And they didn't approve it, and so we had to start all over. And then we were time pressed, because you've got to have it by the time you're 18. But Claudia Kerschka, Jan, and Quincy, they all worked for me really well. They're great people to have. They do the city well. So I thank them for helping me out with this. This is the greatest honor I'll ever have. I've worked really hard for it, and I'm really proud.
Thank you. I do think it's a great honor, but I challenge you for this not to be your greatest honor. I think that you have great, great days ahead of you. So thank you so much for what you've done for the city and yourself, your family, the community, your school. You're a great ambassador for the community and excellent example for young people to look up to. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, this is the visitor's section of the meeting. It's an opportunity for anyone that's here this evening that would like to address the council about a non-agenda item. If you would like to come forward, typically, there's a form at the back for those people that are interested. They could fill that out. But don't be discouraged this evening. If you have something that you would like to share with us or talk about, something that's on your mind, we're anxious for you to come forward. Any visitors this evening? Okay. Seeing none, at this time, we will recess as the Yukon City Council and convene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. The first item is the Item 1A, and that's the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agendas of the Yukon Municipal Authority. By unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of May the 17th, 2016. Have a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
The next item is 2A, and that's Consider Approving Resolution Number YMA 2016-2, a resolution approving the Yukon, Oklahoma Municipal Authority Budget for the fiscal year 2016-17 and establishing budget amendment authority. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Mr. Crosby, I have a little bit of discussion. So this evening, we're going to vote on a couple of different budgets. And just with what we've been through and everything, if you'd take a minute and explain, why are we going to vote on two different budgets? First of all, what's the YMA budget? And then we'll talk about the other one here in a minute.
Well, cities have different authorities. The Yukon Municipal Authority is set up on public works matters. There's different things an authority can do. It can enter into a contract, for example, for more than one year, where a council is limited to a one-year contract. Usually, the authority does many of the capital improvements of the city, which is the bonding and items of this nature. And so as you develop these other authorities, I think you have to have a different budget for each. It has to be based on the estimated income of the city, and you budget 95% of that income. So that you usually have a carryover, as they call it, for the next year, so you have enough money to fund the future year's budget when you start, because you don't start from zero. You've got to have some cash on hand. And we have a budget hearing prior to this. There's memos, go to the council, and we ask the council and notify the public that if they have anything they would like to see on the budget, any changes, any preferences, projects, we ask them to put it in. We then prepare a budget, and then we ask the council. We have a study session. We bring all of our department heads in, and to answer any question they might have in regard to anything within their domain. And after that, we finalize the budget, and we bring it forward for approval.
What is, what makes up the YMA budget? What entities?
Well, I have Yukon Municipal Authority. Let me see if I have it right here. Sorry. I don't have that right here in front of me. Look it up for you. Philip, see here? I don't have it right here in front of me. John? You got it right here in front of me. But Water Sewer Enterprise, which is a utility building, treatment supply, water distribution, sanitation services, Stormwater Enterprise are the major things that make it right there.
So the purpose of the YMA is to manage or collect? What's the purpose of the YMA concerning those entities that you just mentioned?
That is our case, and then the municipal authority can be made up of different things. We have chosen that the council is the authority in here, in our case.
And it collects the revenue from these entities and then spends it accordingly?
Right. And you will have transfers from various funds. The utilities, like, will transfer back to the general fund of the city.
And according to, we have a $10 million, $10,494,408 budget this year for the YMA. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Mr. Crosby, you think would be helpful for the citizens to understand about what's going on with the budget for the YMA?
I do not believe so, sir.
Anyone else have any questions, input? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Next item is Item 3A, and that's Consider Accepting a Utility Easement. Track number seven from ODB Investors LLC, located in Government Lot Number One, Northeast Quarter of Section 19, Township 12, Range Five West, near Frisco Road, Highway 66, to be used for a new 12-inch water line in consideration for the sum of $1, as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Shall move. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
The next item is Item 4A, and that's Consider Accepting a Temporary Easement. Track number 7A from OBA Investors LLC, located in Government Lot Number One, Northeast Quarter of Section 19, Township 12, Range Five West, near Frisco Road and Highway 66, to be used for a new 12-inch water line in consideration for the sum of $1, as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is 5A, and that's Consider Approving Amendment Forward to the Agreement of Operations, Maintenance, and Management Service with Vialda Water, North America Central LLC, allowing for change of scope and new reduced fee for 2016-17 of $1,135,564 to take effect in July the 1st, 2016, as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of May the 17th, 2016; B, payment of material claims in the amount of $327,635.95; C, the 2016-17 renewal participation agreement with the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, workers' compensation plan in the amount of $708,742; D, a proposal for the Yukon Soccer Club to purchase and install fencing to enclose the Ranchwood Park and the Taylor Park soccer fields at no expense to the city of Yukon, as recommended by the park board; E, an addition, an addendum, excuse me, to the existing prisoner public works project contract with the Oklahoma Department of Corrections for the assignment of Union City prisoners to public works projects to extend the effective date of the agreement to September the 30th, 2016; F, accepting the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number SL00009160375 for the construction of approximately 560 linear feet of 8-inch water, excuse me, 8-inch sewer line and appurtenances to serve the city of Yukon Stonegate Office Park Sewer Line Extension Project, Canadian County, Oklahoma; D, denial of claim number 201945-LR from Jennifer Shields for sewer backup, as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group; and H, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for June the 21st, 2016, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
Shall move. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
All right. Next item is Item 2, and that's Reports of Boards, Commissions, or City Officials. Any this evening, sir?
No report this evening, sir.
All right. The next item is 3, and that's Consider Approving Resolution Number 2016-03, a resolution approving the city of Yukon, Oklahoma's budget for the fiscal year 2016-17 and establishing budget amendment authority. Do I have a motion, please?
Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? All right. Mr. Manager, I have some questions as far as now compare and contrast. Explain to the citizens, help us to understand the difference. Why is there a city of Yukon budget versus the YMA budget? What's the difference?
Well, again, the general fund will take up items such as the legislative group of the council, administration, parks and recreation. These particular departments are all within the purview of it. Fire Department, Police Department, Street Department, Municipal Courts, Emergency Management, Technology Development Services, Library, Property Maintenance, Human Resources, Park Administration, again, and Fleet Maintenance. All those are part of the general fund of the city, and this is the budget you're approving right now.
Okay. So regarding this budget for 2016 and 17, can you give the citizens just an overview of what, your opinion of this budget? How is it different from last year's budget? Just an overview.
I guess the greatest difference between this year's budget and the budget we're presently operating in, it's approximately $10,400,000 less than what we're operating presently under. The difference is that because of the problems we've had, each department has been requested and has been reduced their operating budget by 5% through resignations, layoffs, a couple of terminations. We've eliminated approximately 42 positions from the budget. We've, there's some capital projects that we did this year that was money budgeted, will not be there. And there was some, again, as everybody has known, a lot of money has been taken out of reserve, which there is no reserve at this present time, a very small reserve. So that money's not there to put in this budget. Again, we feel that we've got a very good budget. This budget, we will be able to handle. We plan on rebuilding our reserves, and we'll be in excellent shape by the end of the year.
Does this budget call for reduction in any services for the citizens or for the community?
None whatsoever, sir.
Are there any pools that are going to be closed?
No, sir.
Is the splash? Thank you.
Splash pads operating and very crowded, sir.
Okay. Any layoffs expected?
None whatsoever, sir.
Actually, if I recall, this budget actually calls for us to fill some of those positions where people either had been laid off or people had resigned, attrition had taken some people out as well. Is that true, sir?
That's correct, sir.
And as far as you mentioned a minute ago about our reserves, do you might explain to the citizens what this budget does as far as those reserves, as far as building, replenishing?
Well, the budget right now, we've already put in approximately $444,000 back into our reserve account. We hope by the end of this next year, we'll put in additional 1.3 million back in that reserve account. That is the quarter penny that's reserved, that's supposed to build up to where it's 25% of our operating budget. And we look forward to that happening, sir.
Okay. That gives me an opportunity to address just a rumor that had gone around town about a sales tax increase or a proposal. Does this budget anticipate the council increasing sales tax or proposing a sales tax increase?
None whatsoever, sir.
Has that ever been contemplated by you or recommended by staff to the council?
No, sir.
Expect that to happen this year?
No, sir.
So it'll be no tax increase to make this budget work?
We have no sales tax whatsoever planned for this next year.
Okay. And as far as, up to this point, you say that we have money and savings. Through the time that we went through where we did have issue, did we have to borrow, when I say we, did the city of Yukon borrow any money?
No, sir. We cut back. We were able to make all of our payrolls, and we've made, we've paid every bill we've got, sir, on time.
Okay. So there was a time where it was reported that we may not be able to make our payroll, but we were able to make all those payrolls and didn't have to borrow anything?
That's correct. It was pretty tight, but we did make it.
And now have over $400,000 in the bank?
Correct.
All right. As far as, and I wrote my note here, said the blessing of the employees in both unions, and I mean the fire and the police. So can you comment on that? I know that you and staff, and I want to, I guess I'll take this minute, we did have a couple of meetings, and I want to thank the staff and Mr. Crosby, this is probably premature, but how hard they did work and that the people did cut and work and worked hard to get to where we are. And everyone seems to have, to me, seems to be pretty excited about where we are in the city and that we've come over maybe the hill. Tonight, we're going to vote on the fireman's contract. Last week, we, our last meeting, we voted on the police contract. Do you have anything that you would be willing to share with the community and the listeners tonight about the position of the city and our different employees, as far as this budget is concerned, Mr. Crosby?
Yes, sir. I feel that the fire and police, our two unions, were very cooperative. We did eliminate a position in each one of those departments. In the police department, we did three. And those were because, really, to handle the jail right, properly, we became a 10-day holding facility. If we became a full-time jail, we would hire a lot more people, and we couldn't afford to do that in this jail. So we eliminated the two jailers, and we're now a holding facility. We eliminated a major's position in the police department and a captain's position in the fire department. The unions were very cooperative, very happy with the contracts they signed, and I thank them. And our rest of our employees have been explained how we operate, and they've been very cooperative. And like I say, I think we're all looking forward to a good year.
Thank you, sir. As far as the consideration of citizens, guests, different people, have you had an opportunity to talk and address the different people's questions or concerns about the budget?
Yes, sir. If anybody had a question, we do have people call us. If they still have questions, we'll be glad to sit down and go over it with them, explain how we got to this point and where we're going in the future.
Okay. With all that being said, any comments or questions of any of the council members? Okay. And this is opportunity, if we'll open it up to the, if there's questions or comments, anyone here this evening have anything? If you come, you have to come forward to the, we all know you, but the TV may not recognize your voice.
Rick Caccini, Yukon, 1140 landmark. I wanted to thank Jim Crosby for coming to the Rotary, and he did a lot of explaining, and everyone was very well received and understanding what he was trying to explain.
Thank you, sir.
So he did a very good job.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else have comments, questions, anything before we vote, call the vote on this budget? Call the roll, please. Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Well, again, I just want to say thank you, thank you so much, Jim, and staff, and all the different department heads, and the employees, and people who worked so hard to get us to where we are. I know that everyone has given and toiled and worked diligently to get us to where we are, but I am, I am deeply grateful for what you all have done. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that being said, the next item is Item 4, and that's Consider Approving the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the city of Yukon and the International Association of Firefighters, the local 2055 for the fiscal year 2016-17. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Now, I apologize if I said that we voted on this last time, and I may have switched them around. Chief, you're here this evening, and both the chiefs are here. I really appreciate you guys working with us and all your employees and the different people that work and make, you're a big part of the community, and your voice and your acceptance, and you're willing to work with the manager and the assistant manager. That means a lot. It means a lot to the council. It means a lot to the community. So it feels good to me that I feel like we have your support, even in this time of difficulty, that you all step forward and have allowed us to work with you all, address some concerns and compromise, and that you all compromise and were willing to work. That means a lot to me, and it means a lot to everybody sitting up here. I want to thank both of you all. Thank you very much. Call the roll, please. Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
The next item is Item 5, and that's Consider Approving Ordinance Number 1337, an ordinance amending the employee retirement system defined benefit package for the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for the eligible employees of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma pertaining to contributions by employees, providing for employer pickup and mandatory contributions, providing for repealer and severability, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Shall move.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion? Mr. Crosby, would you take just an opportunity just to explain Number 5 to those people that might be listening?
Yes, sir. This is a defined benefit program. It's for our regular employees, and we change this a little bit every year. We must reaffirm the contribution of the city employees and reaffirm what the contribution of the city is. This has been agreed upon. We tell the employees what it is, and we're well, our plan is in really good shape. This particular plan will reduce the, it'll keep the contribution of the city employees the same, but will reduce the contribution of the city about 4%, which will keep us still moving forward and keep us in a well-funded position. We're in great shape.
Okay. Any other discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Next item is 5A, Consider Approving the Emergency Clause of Ordinance Number 1337, one three-three-seven, please. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
This... Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
The next item is item six, and that's consider approving the bids, specifications, and authorization, the issuance of a request for proposal for abatement of trash, grass, weeds, trees, and brush code violations as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion?
Is this... Yeah, this is our contract, is it not?
Correct. This will go out for bid for the people. That will abate the nuisance. Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, so we haven't sent anything to them yet at all. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Next item is seven, and that's consider accepting a utility easement tract number seven from the ODB Investors LLC located in government, lot number one, northwest quarter, section nineteen, township twelve, north range five west, near Frisco Road and Highway sixty-six to be used for a new twelve-inch water line in consideration for the sum of one dollar as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Next item is eight, and that's consider accepting a temporary easement tract number seven A from the ODB, I'm sorry, ODB Investors LLC located in government lot number one, northwest quarter, section nineteen, township twelve, north range five west, near Frisco Road and Highway sixty-six to be used for a twelve-inch water line in consideration for the sum of one dollar as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
Shall move. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
The next item is item nine, and that's consider approving amendment four to the Agreement of the Operations, Maintenance, and Management Services with Viola Water North America Central LLC, allowing for change of scope and a new reduced fee for two thousand and sixteen seventeen of one million one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars to take effect July the first two thousand and sixteen as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion?
Just a comment, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, I appreciate, I know we voted earlier on YMA, but it is a nice thing that we were able to go back and actually reduce the fee this year because, you know, the entire economy is down, and they've at least passed some of that along to us, and I've tried to push it through. I appreciated that.
Great. Any other comments? Questions? Call the roll, please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is ten, and that's consider awarding the contract for the city of Yukon Year fourteen Community Development Block Grant, Small City Set aside Sanitary Sewer Replacement and Roadway Repair Project to Urban Contractors LLC in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Shall move. Second.
Any discussion? Discussion? Call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
The next item is eleven, and that's consider a motion to accept the irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of two hundred and five thousand dollars for sanitary service, utility, and water maintenance improvements to serve Stonegate Office Park located at sixteen oh one Health Center Parkway as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Next item is item twelve, and that's new business. Any new business this evening, Mr. Clark? Thank you, sir. Council discussion, Mr. McCarron.
Well, I once again want to thank Jim and the staff. Probably the best budget session I've been through of the last four, and I certainly appreciate the professionalism that we were shown and the concern and everything else about the budget, particularly Chief Corn and Chief Kevin, you know, that they both were instrumental in making sure that police and fire were on board, and certainly appreciated all of that. And just as a little side note, I, you know, we got a... We voted on the fencing for the Yukon Soccer Club, which I thought was something that is important because I've seen the kids running out towards the street, and I think that was a pretty good safety issue, and that was more than worth addressing, and I appreciate the folks from the soccer club that stepped up and decided to do something about it. With that, Mayor, I yield back.
Councilman Russell.
Well, I also would like to thank Mr. Crosby for the very thorough explanation of the budget. It made it a lot easier to comprehend, and well done. Congrats to Hayden Frampton for the honor of being an Eagle Scout. I don't see him here now, but congratulations anyway. That's all for me.
Councilwoman Smystrela.
Yes, and thank you again, Jim, for... I'm going to get tired of hearing this now. You're doing a great job. We're so happy to have you with us and the staff that were right there with you, beside you, in front of you, whatever, that helped. We really appreciate you and all your work. The city is looking beautiful, and it's all the events that are coming in in the next two or three months that we will all, most of us probably, be part of, and just thinking about all what happens. It's like, there's a lot of cities that don't do all the things we do, and it's these children here, I mean, my great-grandchildren can go out and, you know, like, once a month or wherever, and just have fun, learn. It's just wonderful. So thank you, Yukon, the citizens of Yukon, and hopefully you will be comfortable and with the leadership that you have now in the city. Thank you.
Councilwoman Yanda?
Well, I want to congratulate Hayden as well and thank him for his leadership and just wish him the best of luck in his bright future. And I'd also like to commend the staff and the administration of the city of Yukon for the excellent budget that was set forth and passed tonight. Thank you.
I'd just like to echo what everyone said regarding the budget, just that we worked hard to get where we are. The work is still ahead of us. Every day is a new day here in the community, and doing a better job, not, you know, it's important, I think, to look, and I really enjoyed the prayer this evening. To me, that said, you know, let's not dwell on the nasty things and be resentful, or, you know, I think it's important to realize and understand what went on to get us to where we were, to improve on the past. But I mean, there are certain people that, I mean, dwelling on the past, I mean, that's... I just think that bogs us down. I think that that limits our opportunity, that limits our scope, it limits where we're going to go. I think you can learn from the past, and I think that we've learned from the past. A good number of the people that were around over the last year, whenever we found ourself in a difficult situation, they're no longer here. They've been replaced. We're replacing some other people. We have a new treasurer, we have new auditors, we have a new city manager. So the four levels, the top four levels, the city manager, the city treasurer, and two auditors, they've all been replaced. We have new policies in place that will hopefully help us and protect us, that we might not have a problem in the future. To some people, it seems that it's so obvious that how in the world that you as council members didn't know what was going on? Well, I challenge each and every citizen that if it's so obvious to you all, then why didn't you share it with us, or do share it with us? These are open meetings. We ask you to come and participate, to comment, to share. Not one person came forward tonight. One person, a man and a woman, came to one budget meeting in Channel Five. Channel Five left there and went home and said we were going to raise taxes by a quarter of a cent. Now... I... I'll not comment further on that, but we are here, we are ready, we are willing, we are listening, and again, I will say it again and again and again, if you think any of us are here for some personal gain or great reward, that they're going to build a shrine to us at some point in the city of Yukon, that's not going to happen. I mean, we do this because we care about the community, and we do, whether you believe that or not. One day, they'll put me out beside the Catholic Church. That's where my final home will be in Yukon. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. If you keep expanding, I'm worried you're going to encroach on my territory there, but anyway. But I think that that's important, that the people understand. We want the people to be involved. And I mean, the prayer said, that talked about the resentment and the... That goes on. I mean, part of that is in the paper, the media, or social media. I mean, if you have an issue, come and talk to us, share us. So much goes on on social media that the pools were going to close, that the splash pad wasn't working. I mean, those are things that aren't true. I mean, come to the source, find out about it. We want Yukon to be better. We want it to be better than it was today, tomorrow. There's not anyone that works for this city that doesn't believe that. I don't believe that. I mean, the people that are left here, they want to be here. They really do. They've been through some hard times. They had an opportunity to leave, and they're here because they want to be. I challenge every person here on this horseshoe. I challenge all the employees, the department heads, the city manager, to continue to do a great job and to continue to improve our city. Thank you so much for the hard work, for the sacrifice that you made. Thank you for every one of you all that sacrificed. I mean, when we leave here tonight, Mr. McCarron and I, and the city manager and the assistant city manager are going to sit down and have a meeting. I mean, we've had budget meetings, we have had multiple, multiple meetings, and time, I mean, we are willing to give only to do one thing, that's to make the city of Yukon a better place to live. And we are interested to know what anyone has to say. Please come forward. It always bothers me, and the visitor, of all the years that I've been here, I bet not twenty people in close to, twelve or fifteen years I've done this, not twenty people have come forward to talk to us. But please, please come and share. So... I'm looking forward to, and we started some discussion about the capital, the capital projects kind of got put on hold for a while. I mean, there is Frisco Road. We're going to build an exchange. There's parkland. We're going to build a park. There's Highway Four. Highway Four is going to get improved. All those things are currently in discussion with this group of people, with this city manager and the staff. Those things are going to happen. We didn't fall in a hole. We went through a pothole, and we've come out the other side, and we're moving forward. So we want, and I want the citizens to know, that there's going to be a park, there'll be a soccer field, there'll be an exchange. Highway Four, I hope before I die, will be an improved two-lane or four-lane, or maybe there'll be a toll road. I don't know, but I hope, and we'll see that it's improved. Mr. Opitz, don't make me laugh. So, we know it's a great place to live, isn't it, Rick? There you go, so. Well, with no other business, and I'm sorry, I just, I really feel like, I just, I'm very grateful for what everyone's done, how hard they've worked, and I'm sorry for, but I can't say it enough. I want to know, and I think these people want to know, if there's an issue that needs to be addressed. Don't email each other, don't text each other, don't Facebook each other, don't talk at Mays or the coffee shop. That's fine, but appoint a chairman and come down here. I mean, call one of it. They put our number in, where's the Yukon Review? Thank you for putting our number in the paper every week. Our email. Call the city hall. If you've got an issue with this council, please come and share it with us. Please come and share. But work with us to make Yukon a better place to live. That's what's important, not to only these people, but that's what's important to you. With no other business before the council, this sermon is over.